All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Oviedo City Council Work Session. It's Monday after 26th and 5:30 PM. We have one item to discuss this evening. It's architectural concept for Oviedo Park. At this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Cobb, and let's see if he can keep this going.
Thank you, Dan. Good. Tonight, we're going to be asked to review conceptual architectural plans for two mixed-use developments with Oviedo Park. When we were back in January, you considered actually to approve the, what's known as Park Place Phase Two. And it was an L-shaped building, what we commonly call the L-shaped building, it was a mixed-use development. You approved the site plan for that, and also approved the architectural rendering for it as well. And then, earlier this month, you approved the site plans for the remainder of the properties that are going to be developed on what I call East City Plaza Way, properties from City Plaza Way and Oviedo Boulevard. And so, Mr. Kavanaugh has developed architectural plans for this property. Regarding the L-shaped building, he has revised the architectural plan. So, he's going to be asking you to amend what you've already approved. Tonight, he'll be asking for these improvements, but he won't be taking formal action tonight. Tonight, he's more about the input on the architectural plans that he has for these properties. He's trying to develop an architectural theme for all of the properties, East City Plaza Way, which is why it's incorporated, the L-shaped building into the other developments. So, I'll turn it over to Mr. Kavanaugh, and let him walk through the architectural concepts.
Where would you like them? Where would you?
I'm not at all.
Chris, I have to be here, and then everyone else has had a more perspective and with me, or any pointed questions. I can give you the five-minute rundown before Chris gets here. We were looking for something different. We were looking to set us apart. I've heard the stuff at this table many times, anywhere USA. We don't want to be anywhere USA. This is not anywhere USA. If I was to give you an example of something that would emulate would be, I don't know if you guys have lived down to One Davenport, a project called Soto. They've got TJ Maxx in there, they've got retail on the first floor, tremendously successful project. This also happens to be the architectural style that's been written about, an architect that does multifamily living, and it's kind of sweeping the country right now as the new, how should I say, attractive architectural design. It's made up of a combination. Do you want to grab those pieces of material? Thank you. I brought a couple of pieces. There's really three main elements, actually four main elements. There's a lot of aluminum, aluminum overhangs. So, we have three main, four main elements. We've got siding, which is going to be your light round.
I need to carry it with you.
Okay, start. So, we have really four main elements. We have the siding, which is right here, which is representative of the presence of siding that I brought. This is not the exact piece of siding, but there's three or four manufacturers, and we have to figure out who will use it. But what I tend to connect to, it's a wood grain, and the color will be substantially the same as what's here. This just happens to be made by an overseas manufacturer. I'm not 100% sure who'll use them, but like I said, it's three or four manufacturers that give you this, this look, this, this, this type of architecture we're looking for.
Is that like a cement?
Yes. It's covered with this party of paint, cement, this material. I don't think they want, even, you know, we're on the other development that we did, it's kind of wood, it looks like wood, but it's cement, this material. So, the stuff we'll get in, we're going to be using 30 years or 50 years here. This just happens to be pre-prime. We don't like using pre-prime, and most likely, we'll use a painted brick. When you cut this, okay, it leaves little residues of where we cut it, and all of a sudden, you see little lines. So, what we end up doing, maybe we'll have to paint it, but low and bold, we can't ever see the match to their paint. So, it'll be a combination of, it'll become non-prime, and we'll paint everything that's happening. The second element that we have is more reflective of, where is it? This is the actual clubhouse, this darker facade right here. Okay? You can see it here, 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 here. That's actual brick, and I've just brought a couple of samples. We haven't gotten, you know, to the mid-bready as it relates to the exact color, but what I'll do is I'll pass it over to you, and you can kind of look at it, and just get a flavor of where we're looking at. So, I'll pass this around to everybody. Chris, come on up. It's not that easy. The fourth major architectural element that we have is stuff. Now, this stuff go is made up of different types, meaning that some of it's smooth, some of it has a texture, meaning a horizontal texture, and some of it has a vertical texture. This particular element that I'm pointing out here, the grain, has the, what I call the vertical texture. It has the lines on it, which happens to match pretty precisely what's going on at the amphitheater. Same color, same color palette. So, the design here is to complement the amphitheater with the remaining development. And this is also going to be carried through with other retail establishments we have. There's a couple of people I'm talking to right now that have this exact same flat roof type theme. Because hard lines, right here, we will set this off. The animation in the building, which I had a 3D view of it, but you're talking about five, 10 feet of varying angles of animation. The fourth, rather pronounced, element are these architectural elements that you'll see. We have carrying on with the gate concept that's across the street. We have the gate concept here, but what we added was these vertical lines, which happen to match the stuff that happened at the amphitheater. These aluminum gates are complemented by aluminum overhangs, that you see all throughout Orlando and Orange County as defining spaces. So, these would be the aluminum overhangs, big aluminum overhang here, 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 large one there. This particular one that I happen to be pointing at is the elevation on Oviedo Boulevard, okay, which will also house the office that's in here. The only thing that's not on this board, and I do apologize, is that we didn't put signage on here. Each one of these will have signage on these doors. So, this and this is an office, that and that is an office, and this and this would be also be an office on Oviedo Boulevard. So, we have elevations of clubhouse here. This is referred to as type one, type two buildings here, and this is referred to as the L-shaped building. This particular elevation happens to be fronting on Center Lane, across from the existing residential. This has to be all of the retail component through here.
City Plaza Way.
Sorry, City Plaza Way, Center Lane. Chris, why don't you come up and talk to him a little bit about, you know, this is probably eight months or more of a design concept. Chris has scoured the Southeast United States, not literally looking on the Internet, she's gone to these places. She's been a very important part of the team as it relates to putting this together, why we believe in it, why it's going to be something that stands out as different from what's here. It'll stand out as very luxurious. Chris, go ahead and give your comments.
So, one of my hobbies, and this is really the key last part, that I've been urbanist, because I believe in, I think you guys know, I'm passionate about building community in the local place. And in doing that, we do a lot of work across Southeast, across the United States, and we stay on top of the forefront of architectural, architectural trends. And we think that tomorrow is going to be a great job of illustrating what we think is going to be a fully dynamic, modern, very attractive building. A lot of the materials we're using are, are materials that you're seeing in the high standard residential developments in, in the Southeast, where we go to Atlanta and see examples of this architecture popping up in some of the most dynamic places. Inman Park in Atlanta is a great example. Similar scale, very dynamic, very eclectic. So, we're trying to create this sense of a real place, and we think it's going to bring, you know, a kind of high level of excitement to, to Oviedo. And, you know, when you see, when you, when you travel and you see real places, they're, they're made up of different architectures. So, you'll have more traditional, you'll have more modern. What we've done here is we've created a more modern look, but we've also created a warm look, forms that really create up incorporating these real warm Nejiha panels to the overall architecture. And then, as Tom mentioned, what's really cool is that we're pulling in architectural elements that are being expressed already in the amphitheater, and we're expressing those elements. Great how we've been working kind of hand-to-hand, we're seeing this team to really create something dynamic. You'll see that on these accent panels, we're repeating the fractal, what we call the fractal pattern, and I've got the technical, all the modern pattern in those back rooms. And as Tom mentioned, the kind of cool technical fractal pattern in the gates pulls in, pulls in the collected design within the amphitheater and park, and in, as you know, the technical accents and signage in Oviedo Park. So, there are subtle ties that tie it all together and make it part of Oviedo Park while making it very, so we're quite frankly, just super excited about the architectural direction. And in fact, again, it's kind of counterpoint to what's in now, but also complement to what's in now. Even how we're incorporating the corner building signage, including the pattern with framework, as you're often familiar with, but then pulling the Nejiha forward, the technical pattern. We've even done studies, more detailed studies of the, of the office and retail frontages in regards to differentiating, differentiating those and how signage, individual storefront signage can, can make a difference and can help bring a place to life. And I think each tenant would have the opportunity to do that with the framework that Tom's discussing.
One thing I'd like to add from Chris, is that what you don't see here is the car escape package, which is going to be considering that complements it. The office would be very favored to the accents that are going to have a Nejiha and a brick on. So, it's all going to be tied together and complement one another. The signage that we're also discussing, this going to be the city, that will not change from what is existing out there. So, the signage will still have the brick base at the bottom. It'll be the green ornamental aluminum that sets the tone, the theme of the whole project. So, these are just one component of many different, how should I say, styles that will be out there, that all brought together with the cohesive signage package, hardscape package, landscaping, the landscape palette's going to be identical to everyone. What's being built by Starbucks is going to be the same landscape palette, and what's going to be built by the residents. And the residents is going to be the same landscape palette as being built by the retail. So, we tried really, really hard to create a very, how should I say, upscale, luxurious look, has tremendous amount of animation, has, you know, four to five very distinct architectural features. You know, even with the stuff of, some's smooth, some's rough, some has a verticality, some has a horizontal element associated with it. Some of these buildings, because of the elevation, is going to be retaining walls that have to be out there. Those retaining walls will also be clad in the brick, which now ties again the walls together with the buildings.
Cool thing about the L-shaped building, if you imagine yourself at, you know, human scale, it's kind of cool that each storefront starts to come together. And I think that's something that is really successful in these elevations. You know, it's, it's hard to see from, from the flat elevation, but standing here, that form is going to have a lot of relief, and it's a real kind of modern expression, you know, in other words. And you build from storefront to storefront, you know, it's not as hard to be, honestly, what you might see in Park Avenue, you're living down the storefront, you'll have different displays at the window, you'll have different signage expressions, you know, for each, for each storefront. Then, like I said, that can be had here, there, on the opposite side, kind of be a whole look. So, you know, the corner elements, you need to mention, you know, the expression of that corner element is really strong, so if you're coming down the street, the way we've done with the, the site plan, you'll see that corner is, accent providing the elevation. So, that's more space.
One of the buildings that actually, they do the three-story, the common story building in here, is a four-story. So, this would actually be the four-story apartment of the tall building.
And then, one of the cool things I want to mention is, I mean, we're really taking it to the next level too, relative to all the finishes, the lower level, the floor, everything on this project, it's just simple elevator in the residential side.
One thing I'd like to point out, on Center Lane, each one of these has a own private access, so you can literally walk down Center Lane or City Plaza Way and access the back of your unit. So, usually, it's private access really stood out, just animation as to having enough to get into your own unit. We wanted that townhome-ish look with access in here, there, there, onto Center Lane, make it really pedestrian-friendly, get the people walking around the lane, walking their dogs, making it very active around the lane. That's one of the other things that we're trying to do.
Tom, is that, so that's what we're doing at right there, faces Center Lane?
This would be Center Lane going north elevation. So, if you were standing across from a proposed parking lot, this is what we'd see.
And that's four-story?
This is four, I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay.
It could be the port elevation, but it would be the northwest elevation, that's four-story. As we get closer to Oviedo Boulevard, it's three-story because of height limitations we got there. So, the counterpart of this would be, you have a, you have a Boulevard elevation, Center Lane elevation. This would be the counterpart of it, but the three-story.
And this alone would be the Boulevard?
This would be alone Center Lane, right here. So, these two buildings would be next to each other. This would be the four-story in the northwest corner, and then this one would be the three-story in the northeast corner.
Okay. And you can see the townhome kind of style, entry here, and there, and there, and so that kind of gives you that pedestrian connection.
Those are, they'd be level, level three and eight on this?
Yes, that would be three and eight, correct, correct. We added, you know, just to get height here, in Massing, many times, a 45 degree return or turn the building, we put these additional massing structures here. We're using floor plates that are nine foot clear, so this will appear, we've got probably six feet. So, you're probably talking 12, 24, 48, another five, these are safe to say, I think are probably 50 feet, 30, 55 feet tall here. They're a big structure. Clubhouse, single-story. Overlooking a very, you know, comparison, if you would look at the residences that are currently built, we took this intentionally to make this about five steps above that. You all know, you have a lot of history, I've kind of inherited the look there. This is art zone, you know, coming right out of the blocks, very high-end, very, very nice. It'll, the Ford's all sudden, it'll probably win an award. You inherited the exterior, you know. Define computer, the, the actual building of the units? Well, you can go see a major clubhouse and do whatever you want. I put yes and no, yes and no, in that we have some building construction, but clubhouse, four walls, what happened inside? Yes, except for we had a break in the firewall. These buildings also have significant firewalls. It's not that easy saying, you know, can you change it, change that? Because, you know, we have firewalls. The other issue that we've been confronted with is that we've got almost 14-foot of an oldish picture. So, to me, ADA was a bear, I thought, just a challenge, was now that's what the city is retaining walls, and where we get the sidewalks, and then we're a 2% slow, so that we can meet all the ADA requirement.
Why don't you go to the end of the city and do that?
Please, argument please.
That's fine.
What do you mean by?
I want to see a three-dimensional rendering of every building placed on the road, gentlemen, the street skating, and the clubhouse, and you get a better view of the whole place. Quite frankly, I don't like this. I told you that, right from the beginning. I think this is very modern, it's not Oviedo, maybe beautiful, I don't like it, I haven't liked it since the first time you shared it with me. And if you want to get us on board with it, watching the rest of it would be, I'd like to see three-dimensional, see how it's all going to work together. Because you may be right, you know, good, good, it's not going to be architecture, and everything you've done on here, I started out very nice, so I'm not, I don't actually feel like I'm doubting your abilities. I'm just saying from a personal opinion. You know, the problem is that it's all the same. I mean, look at this, that's the way you still, you build, it's a little bit different. The one, the one. The retail is defined on the bottom, exactly.
Needs a two different, probably two different locations, maybe two different cities.
The one, the brick building, the corner building, all of that, that's all the building. They got, one building's got brick, one building's got stuff on the archways. And again, you guys are right, you might, you might go to the street skating room, you might pipe right next to it, I don't know, just.
Not like 60 people sat here and, and I'm surprised, I don't know, 60 people.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. And we're definitely, we're definitely on the leading edge of upper-end residential , I mean, relatively.
See, that picture right there, it doesn't look like an upper-end building.
Oh, no, I'm not arguing. No, I'm not arguing that that is a look upper-end, I'm understanding relative to current trends and modern, and youth, attracting youth and vitality, you know, are being, you know, performing a really good job of expressing that, first of all, and this is.
Other than the three arches you have there, the animation in our building is far back to this.
I know, man, that corner building's all red, right up to the ceiling, where it really , where that everything's white.
Above it, that orange, that's a sucker.
I said different architectural interpretation, that's conditional, and this is more modern. It's not.
I mean, we actually have a, you know, we have a corner thing, you know, that's more of a, you have, you have, I don't know, not designed and showed really looks like, and I've got rendering that shows them how these all fit in, or where these buildings are.
Well, we got it, I mean, actually, the site plan, I put in numbers.
I always see, I always see this, I don't know, way to building the streets.
I like pictures, guys, I gotta tell you. I, clubhouse, a little stuck, a little plain, a little, that, that, it's the hard edge of too stark for me, as a one-story. I, I like, it does, it is reminiscent of what's at Soto, what's at Mills, upon, you know, probably do a heart, you know, but a hospital, that's a little extreme, a little bright colors, it's subdued, more subdued than that somewhere, you know, but it's, but nice. You know, I, the thing I look at and just say is, when you see larger, larger hits of stuff though, if there's a way to, this just looks, I know the idea is to look, this is like, it has a stark and very similar, you know, it's the same look both sides, but it just looks too much to me, the same. Some little break up there. And then, the large pallets, and this is background case, is the background, all that is now. Like, you have a lot of these, the four pops like this, it's, just put something in the middle, you know what I mean? To break that.
We can do that.
And that's what I'm saying, it just, to break that, it just becomes too much stuck on my mind. You could do something, break one of these elements back in to kind of break, and I know, again, and I think that's where the mayor is talking. We all said, the buildings that are out there, there was never a complaint, it's just, when you blow it up and see it on a stark scale, it blows up, and suddenly, that wall gets really large and looks a lot more stucko, like the walls out there. Anyway, without the flown-out trees, I mean, that one, the picture has a great big tree in front of the wall facing Panera's, and that tree will grow out one day. But right now, you just see a big wall that's pretty bland. That's a big wall that kind of can take over without any of the architecture and seeing how it all. So, I, I agree with him in that respect, that it is, again, I like the idea of the design, but when that blows up in your head, that the picture that looks, you know, how there matches exactly, but once it blows up, the brick that's in that actual building got really small. It kind of shrunk down to what the picture looked like. Ooh, there's a good amount of brick in that building, and it kind of offsets the siding, the lapping. But then, when the building grew up, it is exactly what the picture looks like, but suddenly the brick and how much it kind of shrunk, you know what I mean?
We can certainly do that. I mean, first of all, this is going to read, as I was saying, everybody can see here, this ground floor is going to read much different than these two stories. I like this. I also agree with you, I like this, it's got a lot of issue garden, it's got a lot, I like it.
And it's hard to see the dimensions, though. I mean, you pointed out and said, the silver, it's hard to see the three dimensions that are pulled out from there.
And I can also see you're pulling the long big expanses, that we might need to add site to highlight a little bit.
Whatever, exactly, just a little bit. And it's not like, and if you look, because you showcased the clubhouse, if you step out and look at the clubhouse, that's got, again, it's only one story, but it looks a lot more.
What I'm trying to do is, is get direction. I can't, you know, I distributed these renderings two, three months ago, and I can't, I hope I'm under a situation, I don't like to come back, because there's $20,000 worth of work here.
I'll just walk the record, and you sent the man, you sent you an email and said I hated it. You agree?
Hello?
Yes or no?
I hated it.
Okay, did I tell you I did not like it?
I think you mentioned something, okay.
Is it the modern?
As long as we're all the same, then I did voice my opinion. Is it the modern? I mean, I just need direction, what needs to be here?
I'm a more traditional man.
So, it's just a matter of case relative to modern versus the more traditional game looks?
It just looks cheap. And I can be completely wrong. It needs less stuffo, more hardened stuff, more wood. Those expanses are going to blow up, and it's going to look like a cheap, stucko street block. And you spend the weekend walking around Sabbatic, going all that way.
But that's different.
Why can't, why can't that be so?
Well, if that's the look that you want to go with, like you told me before, I can make this red brick and make it look the beat up. But I, I thought that's not what we wanted. I'm building a $6 million house, not for me, for somebody else who wants this to work on their property. It's going to look just like that. And when you say something like, it looks cheap, it's perceived to be cheap, it's directly the opposite. This is not going to be perceived like that.
Now, the other thing is, if you look, if you look at this building, I like, I mean, I like the difference. This, the, the townhome building, like I said, it, yeah.
I agree with you.
I perceive that.
It needs something.
These little pockets of aluminum.
And on a base floor, just, it doesn't look like, I'll say it this, the other way is, you were just saying, well, they have the separate entrances, and I'm going to say, it doesn't look like a home, it doesn't look like a residence, it doesn't have that, it has a more industrial, like, that's, that bottom floor doesn't really say. has a more industrial, like, that's, it, it, that bottom floor doesn't really say, that's all.
That's the urban flair.
Oh, I understand, I'm just, if, if there's, and I'm talking tweaks, not changes.
What about landscaping?
And that's what I said, and that's why I hear it, the mayor, it's hard, it nature's that.
Oh, you're not seeing that.
One hundred and ten percent, that, and that's the same, it's tweaks, I'm not talking there. And then, the tweak may be, you have to see the picture of the, what the mayor said, like, hey, if I could see the, the landscaping in there, then maybe.
Chris, I'm sure it has brick walls going up, and these particular ones have pots out in the back.
And that's a shame saying this character. And that, and that could be the, that makes it look exactly like it, you know what I mean?
Why couldn't you see renderings like this? Three dimensional renderings, like you said, this is the national, to show us what the streets look like. In what way is it possible? Help us understand.
It's a hard, the hard thing to do is take what he just showed you, that corner view, and relate it onto that view. Along the same draw.
That was one of the things, if you're attached with one, we try to give you the email, so you can get an idea, oh, that's what that is.
Brian, you, hey, Brian, I can figure it, I can see it, I know it, but why do I have to figure it out? If they want to build it, they can show it. That's all I'm asking.
You don't disrespect that. I don't want to give you a 3D elevation and you sit there and tell me I don't like it totally. So I got to get direction on where we're going. If, if there's nothing I can do to make you happy, just let me know now, okay? Because, you know, you're talking tens of thousands of dollars for the elevation. I'd rather go put the, you know, the shade structure over your top lot than spend twenty thousand dollars on renderings. And that's what's going to be. I need some direction on what I'm doing. I didn't give you a pretty 3D render, but I can't need ten pretty 3D renderings. Chris, we charge you twenty thousand bucks for that, those things are hot, and it's going to take me a month because those things are extremely time consuming.
To do a photo real estate rendering, you know, yeah, it's, um.
Hey, this is my opinion, there's, there's other things here.
I understand that, but you should do, like Chris said, just do one, it's three to five thousand dollars.
But then that's sort of realistic, man. It's, it's just, it's fine.
Is that what that is, photo real estate?
What's that?
The one you went to look at, that's photo real estate. Go on the corner view of that, the area's gone, it's a phase two.
This is holding me up, every retailer in the public right now wants to know what I.
Yeah, that's, yes, that's photo real estate. You have to do, you have to do the sketchup model, um, and then the sketchup model has to be able to do it well.
I like it. Little tweaks, that's all.
Yeah, we can certainly look tweaks, because I'll come through the site building process, and I'll make the little tweaks, and I can present it to you. Well, I got to go before you can, you'll miss me over. And I don't mind doing one 3D elevation and show it to you, but I might.
Get a corner, maybe, you know, from the amphitheater, like, as, as a view from the amphitheater, that, that corner, because that'll give you, please, I, I, that to me, it'll give you that view of that building a little bit in a corner, how it should look possible.
I'm telling you, I love that.
That, I think that looks great, I need to.
I mean, that is.
The retail one looks great.
Awesome.
There's so much going on, and that's why I said, you know, as opposed to, if you look at the, and again, there's a starkness that's supposed to be like that, I understand that.
The clubhouse relative to context and the street network and the landscape, because it's only a, it's a single story, and your watch walking has the rich, you know, wood walls.
It's more like, yeah, but it's a little different. Okay, you're dealing with, for everything else, it's broken up first floor. I mean, you look at this elevation right here, your first floor is totally like blood on the first floor, you ate it all, we'll set it off, it's really the fourth story.
And just that one that kind of.
Here's a three story corner, that looks nice. Broke it off. You know, here we go back to the fourth story. I see your point, I think we can probably work a little.
Just that little center section, and repeat something, it's the same center section, they can just.
Those types of tweaks can work well.
We've got some work, um, recently, in that house in P, um, and actually, we did a project in Westport, um, where the architects really tried to break it, break it up into like three separate buildings, just like the one there. And then we did another one in, same client, in, in St. Pete, and we went much more modern. But I'll tell you, everyone I talked to really likes the more modern look. It was, I mean, it was successful and beautiful, and it wasn't trying to be something not honest, it's true, it's time. Um, you know, I, I think I shared with the mayor that I'm actually designing a home right now that is in this style for myself. So obviously, I'm a little biased because I love this modern, um, international style. Um, it can be very elegant, um, it's going to be, you know, what's that?
Purple.
Purple's hard, purple's hard in the landscape.
You can break the green up, it's, I mean, build it up a little, a little tall, a little taller.
Purple's kind of fun with, kind of fun with green, now.
And that end over there, where it's just like all stucko, you got here.
I mean, I, I think with just a couple of moves of maybe looking at the foundation, you know, of the four story building, um.
Have you heard of the other two? I've heard of two out of the five.
With all due respect, this is my opinion.
Sorry.
Well, I, I do understand by saying that I am not a fan of modern, I'm more traditional, but that's my personal feelings, but I, if I was going to buy something, I wouldn't buy it. But I'm really, knowing that about myself, I really look at it very carefully, and I listen to the details of it, and I think you did a fabulous job. Um, I think with, what Councilman Chang is saying is to treat those plain areas so that they don't, I understand that, you know, once it's built, it's a building, that, that little plain area is going to be a big area. Um, and I guess my concern is, and I keep looking, it's modern now, but we want it to withstand time. We, we don't want it to look outdated in ten, twenty years, and look like an old modern building that is out there. So I, I think you need to leave a little bit of tradition in it, and I see that, um, yeah, that one there, I like the way the body is, the way that looks.
Which one are you looking at?
The one.
The white one.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they have three, they have four.
The square ones.
We've been.
And that's one dimension, and that looks real nice, and I can see that really forward in time.
You know, when you think about modern architecture, you think of the origins of modern architecture, which are actually almost sixty years ago at this point, maybe even longer, the nineteen thirties, and you think about, you know, Frank Lloyd Wright, and, and the architects, and whoever, who gets to name it. Um, modern is also traditional, and there's elements in this architecture that are actually traditional relative to the window placements and the, the classic arrangement of, of elements. So, you know, modern architecture is and can be timeless. Um, and it's a matter of, a lot of times, simplicity and restraint. I think that's the hardest thing to do well in modern architecture is, you look at Amis Vandero, you go to Amis Vandero and, and, you know, walk, to go to Barcelona Pavilion, and you walk through that house, and what makes it amazing is its simplicity and its restraint. That's the hardest thing, in my opinion. When you, when you get, become afraid and start to put stuff on it, that's when, you know, it starts to not be true to its, its own form. And that's, and I, I have the battle to the architects, they have the hard job, we tend, we're, we're the, the landscape architects and landscape architects tend to see the whole, see a lot, see the whole picture, and we try to stay true to the vision, which is another reason why we thought this particular architectural forum, we were excited about it because of some of the expressions in, in the park. Um, some, some of the fun that, that the city of Laredo has with the park. So, anyway.
Is the plan to plant trees on here and develop a street?
It's a complete street scape package, this, the streets, the streetscape that you've become familiar with, that, you know, goes around the lake and is on, I'm horrible at street names, the main drive that comes in.
Center Lake.
Yes, that pattern of streetscape and that, those levels of finishes are what you're seeing everywhere. In fact, Center Lake, the main retail street, Center Lake.
I still call it Park Avenue.
Park Avenue. That's all brick, actually, the entire street is brick. Um, so we're actually elevating the level of finishes on the retail, the main retail street. Um, at the planters, the trees, the canopy, the streetlights, um, you know, we're, we're taking the signage to the next level, where we're having, you know, pedestrian scale signage, pointing you to the amphitheater, you know, directional signage, so everything's starting to come together, um, and it's, it's exciting.
The work we've done so far is, is fabulous and good quality, I think it's really beautiful. You know, I think, just thanks, it helps me to complete the picture, it helps me to talk a bit more, more, more pleasantly about it.
May I go and see a little bit?
Um, I don't want, I certainly don't want to go to coming past dollars worth of pictures, but it's something that would help bring, like, one of those, just to bring that in so we can get a better look at what it will look like. As Steve said, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Chang said, there's a big tree in front of the apartment, and once that grows, that's really, really nice, that really adds to the character of the building.
No, we, we're, we actually have fountains, you know, again, we're, like, the fountains that you saw, or that you see, were, were repeating, or not repeating, because they're not the same, but, you know, so all the streetscape and, and mechanic and everything that, that you, that you're familiar with is going to be sold.
I don't do those ones.
They're actually in.
I want to do it pretty well now.
Yeah.
But why can't we see that in relationship to this?
Well, I think if we can pick one rendering that we could make in 3D, we won't have to show you the pods, the landscape thing.
Well, I said, looking at the amphitheater, that corner, you can get a view, because then you can see, the three is there, isn't it, it's a four or a three.
My recommendation is we take the worst one.
The four.
And let me, because those are easy. The ones that are, that would be the fourth story. Those are easy.
You get that four.
Right, and we can make it look all the way.
Which one, where is it, each four? Yeah, the corner there, okay, it's on the chip. Yeah, three, four, five, that.
That, that big corner.
Yeah.
Where you have the, the big mast.
Keith, what do we have there? Well, you know, it'd be nice to have one. I go back to the guys with the three, which we all agreed to way back when.
Dave, the last one, the January.
The corner. And I look at this, and the first thing that comes to mind is why, you know, telling the new philosophy of going with a flat top rather than having the little parapet or the doors or whatever comes up on top.
I'd have to see who's looking at it.
The only thing, the January is. What's, what's the reason for, I think you missed the beginning, that's why. Why do you make it a side change?
It's the style, the style, the style. This is more of a, like you said, an urban, modern.
So, yeah, I think the world is, is, we like that.
Well, that would, that would, that would look like directly across the street. If you want that look from what's existing with park place, that elevation that you're looking at complements, and it's, it's very close to what's there already.
The, the park is.
What's a question?
Okay. That's all, yeah.
So the question to us is, why not, that, why, why would we want to change that?
Well, it's, it's. What's the style of the architecture? Is it just a more modern, more dynamic type of, of architecture that, you know, trying to make it more inviting, not emulate what's, what's there? That, that building also did have a flat roof.
Yeah, but it had features that made it look, you know, that stood out, how the features, I guess, you don't know what they call it.
And it's like, you know, also important, how, how, like, I'm talking.
Okay, but it's only on, but it's only in the corner. Keep going back, this is your data, listen to our differences.
I'm not arguing with us, defensive philosophy, so what does that matter? I just want to understand, um, you know, how do you make us come in line with that after what we saw, you know, again?
Well, I think it had to be in my direction. You know, your target market out there is going to be millennials, okay? Whether they're buying, renting, whether they're squatting, whatever, okay? This swath of people coming through isn't going to change for twenty years. Homeownership is way down, these millennials are progressive, they want to get married later, they're coming out of school with a lot of debt, they want to be mobile, they want to play with their gadgets, this is what they're building. If you go to Tallahassee, I went to Tallahassee two weeks ago, okay? I would probably tell you seventy-five percent of everything being built looks just like this. I'm entertaining sprouts, fresh market, their buildings, the first thing I think, seventy year elevations, look just like this. Okay, this is where the architecture is headed. This is also going to be perceived, the most of general public, maybe not with the five sitting here, okay, as higher end, more desirable, it's, it's not anywhere USA, this is, this is not the, the red brick, you know, siding and stucco of, that you see in a lot of municipalities. You know, back in the sixties and the seventies, when they build all those houses, it's asphalt shingle, it's stucco, it's red brick, okay? This is kind of different from that.
Well, those are all good points, and I agree, except, you know, audience don't vote if they need more.
No.
And what scares us is the risks we're taking to go this way. I think, I think your points are valid, but.
I can tell you, I just need direction, and I don't mind going back to that picture, okay? But I'll tell you, in my, in my professional opinion, it's going to be viewed just like what you see across the street. And it's probably going to be closer to anywhere USA, which is fine, okay? It's not going to be viewed as kind of high end, elegant, sleek, urban, it's not the design that is, you know, most everybody's asking for, to be honest with you. I only want to change it once, okay? I think both of these will, will sell. I think one is going to be perceived as much higher end. To me, it matters to be perceived as higher end, because it's going to cost a fortune, okay? And if it's not top of the line, I can't afford buildings. So going back to that particular picture, it's cheaper for me to do. But I just like to go one time, tell my architects, this is where we're going back, I got five people that are voting for it, and I just want to do it one time. And I'll make, I'll make it look just like that.
Well, I, I think we can agree, we don't want you to come back and want to make a decision, go in one direction. Um, I'm just trying to figure out which direction I want to go, you know, play fun.
Um, I, I want to ask you a question, you said something there, um, I think my interest, basically, you said that when you're talking to retailers like Whole Foods and all those different ones, they want to see the red bricks of the building that is going to be, that they were going to, is that what you're saying? Does it make a difference to them?
First of all, the retailer really, the sixty-four thousand pound gorilla in the room, okay? They're coming to you and say, to me, and saying, if you want me, here's the buildings that I've got to build, okay? Outback, I'll use as an example, okay? If you go look at Outback's new design, it is very close to that.
So to attract.
McDonald's is very close to that. Burger King is close, look at all the new McDonald's, Burger King.
Look at Seasons Fifty-Two, look at the Whole Foods down on, uh, San Lake Road.
They're all.
Look at the new, um, if you've been to I-360, and if you've gone down that retail street currently, I mean, it's, you know, if anyone walked it, really, it's, it's a more modern expression. It's the way, it's where.
Does it make a difference? Are we able to attract?
When the retailers come to me, I don't, I have very little say in what their building looks like, okay? They're going to come to me and say, Tom, I'd like to be here, here's what I want to put, here's my footprint, here's my elevation, because they're a national brand. Now, if a mom and pop comes here, I'm not being disrespectful to anybody, Luigi Pizza wants to come here, I've got a little bit more flexibility to tell them, okay, if you want to be here, that's what it looks like, you're rent standing X, and let's go on. But if you're talking about a national retailer, and I've looked at probably twenty of them in the last six months, I was shocked when, who was it, Sprouts put their rendering in front of me. I was like, no, I couldn't contain myself, I had to pick up the phone, and it called somebody and said, you're not going to believe this. and say, you're not going to believe this. It's identical to our building.
The Sprouts stuff is similar.
Yeah, but I, I'm just going to tell you that, that the, the style and the talent is heading in this direction, if it's not already there. For example, you can go, you know, Ale House, if you look at some of their new renderings, it's heading in this direction, may not be there yet. Outback, they're 75% of the way already.
You know, what about the retail that you would look forward to filling those retail spaces when you want them?
They're all good, they're, they won't be national tenants. I mean, I don't mind telling you, you know, we're, we're talking to a sports club, we're talking to a, you know, sub place, but your national tenants will not go below, okay? They're very particular. They want their own building, they want their own image, they, they want it all. And that's why, if you remember on the site plan that I showed you, with those four corners for restaurants, those four corners are basically going to come tell me, if it's a national guy, they're going to tell me what to do. And as long as it's in the architectural flavor, okay, and my staff says, yes, it will blend, yes, it'll work as far as eating, as far as, you know, making the whole project cohesive, then I'm interested. But if they come to me and tell me that they want to put a barn, for example, or, you know, something that looks like it needs to be, you know, in Georgia, I got nothing wrong with Georgia and the back country, you know, made out of a log cabin, I just kind of politely decline and say, guys.
Why don't we just make it all look like Hallenberry color today?
Looking at what?
Hallenberry color today. Yeah, look at the three and the four story. The other thing is, the three story, each building, it looks like there's multiple separate buildings, I think that's the only thing that's missing.
Well, you're right, it's because of the retail.
The retail differentiation because putting in your, you know, and that's, I think that would also enhance if you could add some more depth or, you know, again.
If this is the style, this is the style we go.
That's a, that's a beautiful building.
Right, if you don't really.
Or no, that's a beautiful building.
If this is the style we go, let my architects and let my planners come up with, you know, accentuating and highlighting maybe the first floor on that four story version, because, and I would pick that rendering because as you said, that's probably the biggest building, the most stucco, the least animated of anything.
Councilman Shekin has that.
All right, so here's my thing, when I walked in here, I mean, and first off, I feel I can't now get up here and point out, when I walked in here, I mean, you got to remember one.
Grab the microphone, let's say, while we're having a bit.
You just got to remember one thing, you know, the people voted for this, right? So, you know about the vision we talked about, you know, unlike these people online that are constantly bashing us, you know, we didn't put this here, the people voted for this, right? So we're just trying to do something that like, they value hate about this when I walk in. I like all of this, this is all good, but you've got to do something with this, 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 all this beige all over the place, it just, when I walked in, it just looked like a big tent. So whether it's more brick, maybe it's just a couple of hornings, I wouldn't say to kill all of this, this I actually like, this kind of reminds me on the bottom, walking down Freedom of Seas cruise ship in their little wall there, this, this kind of, but the rest of all of this stuff here, this beige stuff all over the place, this has got to go, four windows that just look like that, that's got to be dressed up a little bit, I think your building is okay, but all of this beige, you've got to put something else in there, even if it's a different color. That, that's the only, that's the only issue that I have.
We certainly could add.
But when you walk, when I, when I walk in here and I look at this, if this was good, still right here, I hear we don't modern, I like modern. My house, if I haven't used it in six months, I could throw it out, get new, and everybody knows that.
But this one's, that's a neon spinning sign.
Yeah, this looks very, this looks very cheap when you look at it from a distance, but when you zoom in on it, you can see what he's talking about, all the monitors, but Tom, you really got to do something with all this beige, whether it's more brick, different colors, get a couple of, you know, what has, collect is a better word, trimming around the windows, that dress it up a little bit, because I don't think that's going to fly with, you know, regular Oviedo.
Councilman, certainly we can animate with color, certainly we can go ahead and put sightings in select locations. As Chris mentioned earlier, the more we jazz it up, the less it gets away from the, you know, the urban, the sleekness, the simplicity, but I hear you.
I think on that four story. Yeah, I mean, I would agree with you, just looking at that the way it is, I don't know, but I think you got some possibilities to fix it up.
Point is, solely the architect, certainly taking these banks right here, turning it into green would raise it up a lot.
I also think that.
Why, why don't you make them all brick or all wood all the way up?
That's what you need.
That's what you need, that, that building's another bright, you see how you got the wood above the windows and around the windows?
Chris, why don't you put the wood on top?
You could put the wood there.
Yeah, I would.
And I, I could, I could see having a little bit more of a foundation along the bottom, you know, kind of that first store, first story and curvature would be really nice to create.
If you break it up on the building, of course, around the existing, don't they?
Yeah, that's the same.
A little here, first, a little there, but I can certainly see.
I could, right there, right in the middle there?
Right here, right here.
The modern, you know, the modernness of it is very attractive, there is no question about it, but again, I'm just going to come back to, you know, this is not a project that this council or any else, hey, let's go build all this place and ruin the city. Now, the, the people voted for this, so we got to give them the best of the best and I, I think you're close. I like the bottom of those, that retail stuff, that four stories, you need some work, and the top of the, you know, the mixed-use building, that's, I mean, if you can just fix that, I think you're right, you're right there.
What do you think?
You know, all that beige.
Like the little, yeah, like some, a little thing in the center of the four windows.
Yeah.
It needs some.
We can't accept, accept this with a different color.
We could.
I'd like to see.
Chris, wait, wait, Tom, not hard skin, not, not pink, hard skin, not pink.
Tom, great.
Just like clamps.
We can take a siding here and put a deck there.
That's a career one, Tom.
We can come in here and make this siding also, that's not a problem.
Ian, I could join, but for this case, it's just that we have.
We need a microphone.
We need to need, we need some more brick.
We have a session discussing the multifamily and we need to.
Wait, hold on, Chris, wait, Chris, give me one second, Tom, I'm not seeing no brick, where's the brick?
It's all black, red, dark, it has to be.
That all brick, all brick. Maybe that's why we need that.
Given the.
Okay, I got you.
There, 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 all the group, here, here. There's a, there's a, there's a corner, here's a, here's a, here's a corner, can't sit down there, here, 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 here.
Yeah.
I don't, I know you guys like brick and I'm not, I'm not opposed to putting brick on it, but the more and more brick we get, the more and more it gets us away from the kind of the urban slick look, but.
I actually agree with you.
You could turn it into brownstone, I'd be happy to plant.
It's not that far away.
But what we discussed in our, our work sessions, there were some guidelines that we discussed that was, you know, following direction from City Council, so stucco, we were limiting it to 20%. And that would be very good, I mean, here we have a lot of things to discuss. One is style, it's highly modern, but if you're okay with modern, we can work, you know, the modern to meet the standards that we discussed.
Well, let me ask you a question, I'm going to stop you right there. What do you think of this? And you are free to speak because I don't care what any of these other folks say.
I am a big fan of modern myself, but one thing that I would be, I would worry is that we are in the field, we are not in a very modern city, so I'm, one of the things that I think we need to stay with consideration is this one, because this one is very close to the one you killed, that is not modern at all. So I think this is a huge contrast. For me, it's too much of a contrast for something, we do very straightforward. I like modern, I think this one, the other corner, the local development, you could come up with a more modern than this one, I think it's going to be a huge contrast to what we have already there. So if you're all aware of that.
Certainly that's actually, yeah, like you said, it's resemblance, it's, it's resemblance of an old town, three story, if you put brick on it, it would be a three story, old town, main street, it just got a little more modern look to it. The differentiation separates it, which I like, and again, gives it that old world. Again, you can go to an old, you know, some old town, go, here's the main street, and it's going to have three story brick building instead of a three story, there's brick in there and some other structures. So I think it actually, that's the one that kind of crosses over to me very well. Yeah, that, it's modern, yeah. I think that actually, again, with the storefronts, I mean, kills it. That is the one that's a little too industrial and a little too modern.
But one thing that you could, I think, create a little bit is putting more materials that's linked to the one that you have right now, is putting more brick, more, more gray in the ground floor. What we want, that was another direction that we discussed, for the mixed-use, we wanted to decorate and put a more scaled material at the ground level for the pedestrians, because you're going to walk here, so you're going to see the, you know, the gray at the ground level. So here you have, I think, white stucco, which is nice, but for maintenance, you know, for the future, I think you have more, you know, you have gray here would be, you know, a bit more upscale. And I think, I agree with Sebastian, for me, I like this, I like that marble look over there, and this one, I think we have, I would suggest to break, put more texture, more of the wood, I think the wood is too unlimited here, it's beautiful, maybe someone would look at, you know, it's nice, we could have lots of that, yes, so. And the other thing that I would also just suggest, if we're going to the modern, you know, is to have more difference in the height, so that we don't have something that's white.
And that's the second, but again, that building has got at least some differentiation, the four story has enough, just even if they can just have a little more.
Well, I can't see your continuation, this is not a little continuation.
And that's where it's hard, just black, you know, example.
Yeah, I think what you can't see again is these, these elements right here, it's kind of, you know.
Now, those are a little, it keeps it right, and that's, I, I like that, just these targets.
Well, they're just irrelevant, because you got to see here, you got this one pointing here, that one pointing over there, there's another one over here that points in this direction, so, you know, there's so much longer perspective. You know, we discussed this at knowledge open, and we love the concept of being across the street or some probably, there's just thousands of, you know, examples in Orlando that have, you know, from 1950,000s to something that's extremely modern. We, we like that contract, we think it'll play well, given that that one side of the street and this side of the street has a retail and a little bit of design, but I just never thought, just what's your opinion on putting a little bit of breakdown on the bottom, I mean.
And different colors of brick too, that would be.
That can work, especially when we have it instead of white.
Well, you can certainly around this right here, you can separate that, you know, what you do here, you come over to there, but what I don't want to see, it gets back into the more, I was looking for contemporary, contemporary, but country look, it's this, this, this sort of fan that goes straight through here, that's, that's a little, that's, we don't want to do that. You also got, and these are elevations, and these aren't really the scale, that's probably two, what would you say, three or four foot there, bearing in height, parapet is different? Yeah, right here is different from there, 22, 40, you're talking about.
Yes, that doesn't, that doesn't go across like that.
This actually, this actually, you know, probably.
All that is is a parapet, it's a building. But all that is is a parapet.
Well, you know, I think that's, I don't know what other, the circles, I agree, there's a lot of things, you get that, you just want to have more feel, some of the materials are not, sorry.
And also, that's.
I'm considering my, my parapet.
That's why the 3D helps, and if you're doing one 3D and the other ones, and we were talking in the middle, we think about the street view with landscape, you know, just at the side with the landscape.
Showing the landscape pattern.
With, with all of the additional hard skin, you know, you know.
I didn't see anybody here who want to give you just paint things different colors. Just for one elevation, we don't want to do a 3D model of it, okay? We can come back and, and, and highlight a big circle around what we changed from here to there, we can give you 11 by 17, it's just a question of, you know, where do you want it done? We're all kind of in the consensus that this probably is the 3D version, okay? We can show you what's happening with trees and your perspective, understanding the fact that this will be the worst perspective, only because it's a long building, it's a four story, you know, it's not out of the overall order or anything like that.
Let's find it, but I guess the first thing we need to do, like Chris says, is decide whether we want to go to this modern or stick with the older. If we go to this modern, I don't want to see this older, because I'm not, because I'm always comparing, I want to see what we want to build. That's where we're going to go.
I'm sorry, I missed that one.
We need to decide, this is where we're going to go. Forward or backward?
I, I think Chris is very honest with himself. I could, I could be convinced he would. I, I honestly think what's in that book, look. But that's just, that is just my humble. Well, I also think you got, those are 3D realistic pictures, it's probably things that, right here, if you look at, make it harder to look at this.
And if you give us that three, four, five on this map, view, that corner, 3D, put all the stuff in it, then we can get a much happier consensus here.
This is what we do.
Yes.
But I'll trust the, I, I trusted the architects before, not some of the designers, I understand, but I'll trust the architects, I'm going to say on this one, I trust the architects.
I think the closest is this, 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 I've seen recently, or some Solara apartments, just built in San, online, I say.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But this.
I like, I like that, just that four story.
I can't keep it up on my butt.
A little more, I get it, takes all the things, you look in that three story, then make it really back and just a little bit of that last thing, again, that's, it's going to be part of that main amphitheater, you come out in the amphitheater, things that are going to amphitheater, you're going to see that a little bit. Take some of those things, differentiation outside, 3D in front, not a, again, there's no change in height on that one, very little, it seems, but we just take it and it looks still look great. I said, I think that's a beautiful, and make the four story look more like the three story in that kind of look.
It's really more enriching the pedestrian experience.
And again, when we see all the stuff that's over there, I'm sure, that it really kind of, for me, that's the direction, that is the direction that seems to be people want, people that are applying, graduating from grad school, looking for a job, all the way, that's what it looks like for me.
Yeah, you guys are, you guys are right there, I mean, you know, it just, when you look at that, and somebody walked in and just saw that, it's just like, man, I mean, I didn't say to the mayor, I said, when you actually zoom in on my head, like you look at that, you zoom in, you see some of the detail of it, now you can say, okay, I'm seeing where they're going. I would like to have modern unique out there, you know, and not have the same stuff everywhere, but those buildings, well, the mixed-use building is fine, certainly the four story, it just needs a little more accent, that's really what it needs. And it, it needs some more accent, and then we can go, and then we can say, you know, Oviedo on the bar is not like every other place, you know, that it is, but you got to, you got to, I'm not sure what the answer is, but it needs a little more dressing, you know? And I think we're good.
So, what do you say, Sidney? Seems like we have some success.
Yeah, I think so. I do have a question though, when you look at this, and, you know, you have these little, they're sticking out, they're a little bit higher, and I think that you're going with that, but we just can't see it because of the pressure. Is that, is that what I'm seeing that image? And I'm looking at, you know, your pictures here, and I see the bathrooms with the railings and all that, are they sticking out a little bit or is it all flush? And then you have the.
There are distinctions, there are differentiations in the, in the.
No, it's not just a flat, that wall, there are.
There are distinctions, there are differentiations, it's not just a flat red wall, there are...
I think that's what I'm...
Yeah, you have to really look at the shading, you have to look at the shading lower on the buildings to see where it's, you know, cuts out, pulls back in, you know, those back, yeah, it's difficult to see them when it's not clear, they are there.
So that articulates in an alley?
Yes.
This building?
Yes, that building articulates, that building even articulates a little bit.
Councilman, when you answer your question, these bathrooms will stick out five feet per cent of building, that's what that overhang, that big round thing actually sticks out five feet of building.
See, that's gonna make a lot of, a lot of difference.
Like that right there, that shadow, that sticks out five, it's like that's another roof element, sticking out, this is probably about three feet, and this is a gray, so you're going, you know, kinda like that, and stepping back.
Tom, this is, this is really, when we first saw this building, and I say it changed, but when we saw this building, we all went, wow, because we could see everything, you really need to see those buildings in relation to the other buildings in something like this, because as soon as you showed us this, we were like, amen, and it was good, that just does nothing for anybody, and I think you probably could've saved an hour, an hour here tonight by coming in with a picture like that, because I think you probably could've said, okay, well, you're asking the angle of visual, why didn't you bring us one back?
Yeah, bring us that corner to 3, 4, 5, that's what we need. Now, 3, 4, 5 is nice, but I wanna see that mixed-use building in a really grand, right, in relationship to what's there.
That's what we're...
That is really, that is a great...
Which one?
That. So, Sandy, just like you said, you want me to create a 3D rendering for the parish purpose, what do you have on there?
Correct.
And then you want another 3D rendering of the four-story?
That's theirs.
Well, I don't care if you want...
Yeah, just bring the first one.
I don't care.
If these guys want the one...
Well, I think what you're talking about is that on the, what they call the L-shaped building...
Yeah, the mayor, the mayor talks about right.
Right.
Bring that one in.
Just bring one, I'm, I'm, I'm a detective, something like that, showing the other building on the other side, so you see the relationship.
This is the one side of the street.
Right.
It needs the, the other building incorporated, and it might have a chinky angle, but... I see, Chris, you're trying to board taking that picture, giving it 3D, but also incorporating the same building on the right angle.
Looking from the sign, basically, the tall sign, back towards the corner, you know...
Yeah, that's different.
It's different from that, exactly, I'm saying, so if you're standing where the big sign is, I just put it in the middle...
The job went upstairs.
If you're standing in the middle where the sign is, and looking back towards the corner, you're looking south, you're looking southwest.
The nice thing is, it can be a true photo shop rendering, it can solve in the same condition, and we can, you know, frame that, that goes to the right, and then draw the sketch of it.
So, that's southwest from the...
That would come to the art question.
Add in all of the hard skin that we talked about preceding, and then...
Something that will always be yours, rather than considering a fourth one.
I'm trying to, because I realize me, people call that the other building section in housing, so, if we're gonna keep, you know, we can keep saying we want something really like it is, but we all complain about it, because people complain about it desperately, that's what looks like section in housing, so...
I'll do that.
It could be dated in a few years, much like Pink, you know, Formica, and the 1900s whitewashed, that building should be...
See, that, that's one kind of building, all the work...
That's what I'm saying, this is like...
I think this could be...
We got one, yeah, one rendering from the splash pad, looking southwest, she knows exactly, right there.
Give me a corner.
And now I can see some of the new building, and the relationship with the old building, that's somewhere like that, I mean, you may come down all slide a little bit between this splash pad.
I think you'd be better off, the closer, closer to the veterans' street.
By the veterans'...
So you can see down the vista of City Plaza, but if you're, if you're over at the...
I'm saying, somewhere, somewhere in that direction.
So you wanna see that vista going down City Plaza, or going up City Plaza.
And it could be the other way, too, you could be from the front, behind Panera, looking back.
Yeah.
What it says, if you were standing in the middle of Veterans' Street, you kinda want a vista view looking down.
Or you could, or the other way, if it's batteries, but now, let's see the parish that you have.
Yeah, actually, I think the Veterans' Street, that's what I was envisioning, is standing right there, or you should take the wide-angle shot down the street, and then it, yeah, because then you're gonna get the building corner and the context, you're gonna get the new, yeah, I, I think that would...
And then we can add these renderings, all the hard skin, not, not just painting this stuff.
Right, Steve and I were just talking about some of the ideas that Tom suggested, and that Teresa suggested, I, I think we can create, you know, elevate that elevation with some simple moves, actually, so it's a true to the modern while, while making it stronger.
Right, now it's... I need you to help me. I'm not sure what we got, we have to leave, but this is holding.
Oh, you're gonna have that done, but in a second.
I will put my saddle on, when's the next, um, hard rock, I mean, I've got a bigger one. You got two weeks. They don't have another work session, we have to get that, everything we were doing is dead in the morning.
You got this in bid, don't you?
Well, I gotta, remember, we also put, we're gonna give you some 11 by 17s of the four-story one, that's shanked, okay, so we'll, we'll give you, what we'll do is we'll put old at the top and give you a new one right behind it, showing to you, just came through and say, this is what changed, and we're gonna do one 3D version of standing in the Veterans' Street view, looking back in a perspective, 3D perspective, as we were looking down the street towards the town. All right, let's get those out, see if we can tend to everybody, you know, once staff hasn't given my notes. Brian, do you have anything else to add, because you're very quiet. I know, I know when you're very quiet, your wheels are spinning.
No, I'm fine.
All right, and Tom, now let's talk about the shape, you wish you could build?
You wanna be on the next agenda, I mean...
Let me see the... Over the water park, you know, the sale and the shade structure is made from, which is probably, yeah, probably a 20, 25,000 dollars.
It doesn't switch channels.
Yeah, just a little bit of shape, that, it's... So, the picture you're gonna bring us that November night, whatever accent you're setting to one of the buildings, okay, whatever will be there. You already have that picture, all we're gonna do is take our new elevation, right behind it, so you can see what it was, if we break it, just rest it on that. All right, is everybody good? Anything else, can we, can we get a new order? All right, we're out of here. Thank you.